A call to order. The regular board meeting, April fourteenth at the West Valley School District. Citizens may comment on items appearing on the agenda when invited to participate during that agenda item by the board chair. Citizens may comment on items related to school district business not appearing on this agenda during the public comment portion of the meeting. Citizens, after identifying themselves, will proceed to make comments as briefly as the subject permits. Basic rules of decorum are in effect at all times. The chairperson may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement where appropriate, including when statements are out of order, too lengthy, breach of personal privacy rights, abuse of obscene, irrelevant, or otherwise improper. The public should realize that this is a trustee business meeting conducted in a public forum will stand for the two divisions to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the infinite justice for all. The manage COVID consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second? There is a discussion. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, do we have any correspondence? Yes. Do you have anything there, Steph?
No public comment.
No public comment? Okay. We'll go on to the informational items. We have Peggy Young here to discuss health insurance.
Okay. Peggy.
Take it away.
Take it away.
Thank you. I'm Peggy Young from American Clinic Agency. I've been your agent for a couple of years now. You've been with Blue Cross Blue Shield, the fully insured plan, just with Svalley School by themselves. As you know, insurance rates for our health insurance are continuing to go up. This year, Blue Cross Blue Shield delivered a twenty-four percent rate increase, which is not acceptable in my book, and it shouldn't be in yours either. And so what we do when we see that, we go up to market to see if there is anything else that we can find that is more agreeable. We went out to many carriers. A lot of them took ass on it. We're not competitive. And we had a couple of good quotes, one from United Healthcare and the other one is from Joint Powers Trust. The one that we're concentrating on is the one from Joint Powers Trust. They are, they are a trust like Montana Unified School Trust, similar to Must probably. But they do schools and municipalities. And so there's a couple of differences when you work with a trust versus a fully insured plan that we want to make sure that we let you know. And then we'll just go through the, let's see. The biggest thing that we centered on Joint Powers Trust is that next year there are guaranteed an eight point five percent or less increase to West Valley Schools. So no matter what happens in your school, no matter what your choice is going forward, you know that next year you can have an eight point five percent increase or possibly less. So you'll be able to budget, and that's a really big deal for schools. We know that you want to make sure you've got a plan ahead. You should always be in your, in your mind to be looking at next year. So that's one of the reasons that we concentrated on Joint Powers Trust versus United Healthcare. United Healthcare, the out-of-pocket maximums are a little higher for their plans, and there was no rate guarantee. So even though they're quite competitive, we didn't know if they were going to flip-flop and be another twenty-four percent increase next year. So.
And by next year, you mean twenty-six?
Correct. July one of twenty-six.
Year two.
Yep, year two. Um, so the rates are shown above as far as what your current rate was with Blue Cross the Shield. You have three plans, and this is the five thousand dollar deductible eighty-twenty plan that you're, you have a lot of employees on. So your total single employees of ten on this plan and two with family. So you can see that you would have had a twenty-three point three percent increase if you stayed with Blue Cross the Shield. You have a point three percent increase if you move to Joint Powers Trust. And the next one is the five thousand, a hundred percent plan. A lot of your employees are on this one, thirteen single employees, one employee and children, and five employee family. On this one is five thousand dollar deductible and a hundred percent after that. Again, Blue Cross is taking a twenty-four point seven percent increase. And Joint Powers Trust is just slightly less than current, a point six percent decrease. And then your last plan is your co-pay plan. This is the richest benefit that you offer. So this is going to be the most expensive anyway. And then it was a twenty-five percent increase, and Joint Powers Trust was coming in with a slightly less one point three reduced from current. So this is how it breaks down to your employees' per paycheck based on whether they're a twelve-month or a ten-month or ten pay period person. So you can see that if they would have stayed with Blue Cross the Shield, if you stay with Blue Cross the Shield, this could be a significant impact to their paycheck, whether they're on a twelve-month or a ten-paid plan. If you move to Joint Powers Trust, very minimal impact. Some will get a slight reduction, but it's not such a reduction that you're like, oh, my gosh, I'm getting a two hundred dollar raise. It's right in line with, you know, moderate. Um, Joint Powers Trust also offers voluntary dental. Your dental rates also went up with Blue Cross the Shield, seventeen percent increase on dental, which means your, your people really like the dental, which is great. But we want to make sure that you can keep using it and keep informing it. And Joint Powers Trust has a better option with a two thousand dollar maximum benefit, no deductible on the dental, a hundred percent coverage for two cleanings a year. Basic service is eighty percent, and the rates are a little bit less.
The other thing is, is that with the dental, the, the one big difference is orthodontia was twenty-five hundred versus Blue Cross was fifteen hundred.
Yes, yeah, so better for your families.
And we forgot to mention that vision is actually included in the medical part of it.
Vision is included in the medical, full vision. So exams, eyeglasses or contacts in the medical and fifteen thousand of life insurance for employees enrolled in the medical. So that's good. So, but you can still purchase it as a voluntary plan. So even if your employees are not on the medical and they want to have vision coverage for themselves and their family, they can do that. Same with dental, they can just purchase the dental separately. And again, so fifteen thousand life insurance policy per employee on the plan for those folks that are not on the, on the health insurance. I'm suggesting staying with Blue Cross the Shield. It's a very affordable plan. I mean, then that would give you ten thousand for everyone that is not on the plan. So that's my suggestion. Um, Blue Cross the Shield, I think it's been a great, great coverage for everyone. It's recognized by all the doctors. There's a lot of value adds, but again, is it worth the twenty-four point seven increase? That's, you know, to be debated. Joint Powers Trust, again, no more than an eight point five percent increase on year two. The life insurance, probably the biggest difference with you're going to, if you go to a self-funded trust versus a fully insured plan, you have to realize that all self-funded trusts have assessment language in their plan document. And the assessment means that should the pool start running very poorly, they can come back and assess each of the plan members to the groups in their plan mid-year if they need to, to get more money into that pool. That hasn't ever happened with Joint Powers Trust. It happened a long, long time ago with Montana Unified School Trust. Must was way back in like two thousand nine when everything was kind of in tough shape. They did assess their schools. Some schools were assessed pretty heavily. It was kind of a shock. They didn't know that they were going to have a, a big bill in the middle of the year. So again, just to be aware, when you go to a self-funded trust, that isn't the plan language. You just need to be aware of it. The other thing that is different with Joint Powers Trust versus Blue Cross the Shield. So Joint Powers Trust uses the First Choice Network, which is a pretty common network. It's a national network. Lot of, a lot of companies use that network that are self-funded. Um, it's an eleven, eleven state area that they have the first choice network in. If your employees go outside of the network, then they could be subject to a balanced billing. What Joint Powers Trust does is they use a company called ELAP. So if your employee gets a balanced bill, they would contact ELAP and ELAP would negotiate the bill so that there was no balance due to your employees. So it's part of a cost-saving measure. I think a lot of carriers are eventually going to go to that type of negotiation process. But again, it takes it off your employees' back. The biggest thing is they need to open their mail and look at their explanation of benefits. If they receive a balanced bill and they contact ELAP, ELAP takes it from there. They negotiate the bill with the provider. So we just need to know what you'd like to do. And then from there, we will take it away, work with your employees on open enrollment. We'll meet with each employee one-on-one this year since if you do make a change so that they understand fully how the product works, what they need to do if they get a balanced bill, who they can contact, all that kind of stuff. Any questions?
When do we have to make that decision, buddy?
Soon as possible.
Yeah, we need to get rolling. So we, we really don't ever want to have open enrollment passed on May fifteenth. Because it's really hard to catch the teachers after, you know, after that time. So, and I don't know when your payroll is for July one, I don't know when you do that.
Yeah.
Jen?
Yeah, so we take July and August out in June. And I pay all of our teachers three times, June, July and August. Their cereal will be the last Friday of the school year, which I think is June sixth or seventh.
Okay.
So I will need at least a week, two weeks.
Yeah.
I think Maggie and I spoke with me having everything back by that second Friday in May.
Yeah.
All done to give me two weeks to figure out what everyone owes.
Yes. Yeah. Excellent.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
One question, do they have any, there's like the Joint Powers Trust, do they do any sort of, like having certain financial condition statements or does anybody review their financial?
I can certainly get you their financials if you would like to.
That'd be good to look at.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Public schools presenting high school levy and inflation. And over to Calispel Public Schools. All right.
It feels like old high school week here. The guy had everybody at Flathead High School. Don't, don't tell who sent the ten. Been around a long time, so let's get it rolling while Jim getting, and Maggie are getting the presentation. And we'll try to give you as much information as, as, as we can. But also what we want to do is just leave time for you guys to ask questions. I think that's been a big part of, of what we've been doing. This is probably our thirty-second presentation, just, just going out because we want to make sure everybody, you know, has all the facts so that they go out and have everything before them before they vote. But I'm Peter Pessaro, I'm the Assistant Superintendent at Calispel Public Schools. Most of you know me from Flathead High School. I spent twenty years at, at Flathead High School as an assistant principal and then as, as a principal. In twenty seventeen, I left, went to the college for five years and oversaw their, their trades programs, the director of trades. It was, it was great. But one of the things that, that brought me back to the district was when we started our transformational learning. And Superintendent Hill was there at the time and, you know, he talked a little bit about, you know, trying to personalize education and giving students more voice and choice in what they're doing and how do we engage them. And I said, well, that's great. That's some of the things that, that we have tried. And I said, we weren't able to move forward with it. And I said, so what, what is the difference? And he said, well, one, we have the backing of the legislature. Two, we have the backing of the board. And three, it's embedded in our, in our strategic plan. And so that's what brought me back is how do we do school a little bit different, you know, for our students? And so what I'm going to talk about a little bit is, and I go off script so much, so I don't know. It's Jill, Jill will bring me back, you know, a little bit.
Before you get going too far, maybe we can introduce our staff so they know, they get preview of what they're getting.
Okay, there you go.
So obviously Pete's going to lead us off. He's going to talk about what we're doing. We got Brian Day, he runs our egg center. He's going to talk about what's going on out of the egg center as well. And then Scott and I are school board trustees here at Calispel Public Schools. We're going to talk about the levy and more of the nuances of that. So we can answer any questions and have information and appreciate your time. So with that, now you're on script.
I know. One thing never, I always say, never give Pessaro a microphone and an, and an audience because you just go. And I said, I, you know, we try to be brief and, and to the point. So I, I really will, but you know, just a, a little bit of the, the makeup, you know, of our population. But I think one of the biggest things is, you know, that we're really trying to get out there is, at our high school, sixty percent is made up of our partner schools. So we have more students from our, our partner schools than we do coming from Calispel proper. And, and I'll just talk a little bit about that. You know, we've always tried things, hey, whether it came around to, to registration or trying to get students acclimated to some of the larger high schools and, and going around, you know, to the different schools. And, you know, one thing Superintendent Jensen has, has asked us to do, and, and it's definitely a need is, hey, we need to do a better job of that. We need to do a better job of making sure that our partner school communities know, hey, that, that this is our high school district. It's not just Calispel's high school district, it's ours. It's, it makes up of all the partner schools. And so that is, you know, pretty telling when, when we have sixty percent of our population coming from those, those partner schools. And so some of the things, you know, that we've been working on, it's that we need to start getting, you know, more of a partnership with, with the staff that's out there. So we've been working on this transformational learning, which is personalized competency-based education and reaching out to a lot of our partner schools, inviting them to Doris Mountain Summit and some of the things that we're doing. Because what we want to do is we want to get them in on the ground floor. So it, it's not, hey, this is, this is what we're doing in Calispel. This is, this is what we're doing for our students, and this is what we're doing for all of our students. You know, the other thing going through, we're starting our second curriculum cycle review in math. And so one of the things we said is, hey, we need to reach out to the partner schools, those, those, those eighth grade teachers that teach, that teach algebra and, and basically invite them and get them on the, on, in on the foundational meetings instead of saying, well, here's, here's, here's what we're doing, you know, at the high schools. It's, we want them to be a part of it. And, you know, we recognize that we need to do a little bit better job of that, not just coming around when it's, you know, when it's levy time. You know, we did hire a communications director. It wasn't just specifically, you know, to provide information for our levy, but it was to continually tell our story. You know, the good things that are going on. Because a lot of times what you see in the paper is, is always a negative. And so we want to showcase our students. We're, we're proud of all of our students and, and we want to make sure that we're showcasing some, some of our stories. So was there a couple more slides? That were on there?
Oh, yeah. If you go back.
So if I go faster, does that mean Pete goes faster?
High school principal, you walk fast, you talk fast.
This is obviously our sixty percent slide. So you guys can see our, the breakout. And, you know, we've got students at Glacier, Flathead, Linderman Education Center, and then some kids in those schools taking classes at our egg center as well. And as Pete was saying, we've got kids all the way from basically, you know, Lakeside all the way up here to West Valley, from Kila over to Caius Prairie. We have a huge swath of kids in this valley that are going to our collective public high schools here. So that's a sixty percent. So if we hit the next one, what Pete's going to talk about, and this is a really wordy slide that I don't, I have a handout. I'll get to you guys if you want to read it all. This is kind of talking about the personalized competency-based education that we're doing. But what Pete's going to talk about, we flip the next slide, is kind of how we implement this from a traditional learning, which has been used in the past to more of this learning model. And if you hit, flip the next slide, how we're implementing this in K five, K eight, nine, ten, and eleven, twelve. So you ready to go?
Right.
I got them back on track, guys.
She actually got me off. Just, just to kind of just break it down a little bit. So one of the things that really, you know, intrigued me about some of the things that we're doing, you know, with work-based learning is, is trying to get the kids outside of the four walls of basically our school so that they can experience. You know, I was guilty of this as, as a principal is, and as a parent say, hey, you need to go to college, you need to go to college. And so, you know, when I went to the FBCC, what I found out that half the kids after they went to college for two years would come back basically with debt. And it's like, well, why didn't you just come here and get a skill to begin with? Well, I was always told to go to the, go to the college. And it's, you know, what we need to do is say, you, we need, you need to find a skill and what you're passionate about so that you can make your own determination whether you want to go right into the workforce or if you want to go to a two-year school, you want to go to the military. Or if you want to go to a four-year institution, then go to a four-year institution and you're not carrying, you know, the debt. And so how we do that is through our work-based learning program. Mike Kelly and Bryce Wilson are running that. And so we have over two hundred and fifty students that are involved with that. But what they're doing is they're going out and exploring. It also starts at K five with career awareness and it works all the way through. But what it allows them to do is to go out and do explore careers to find out if, if this is something that they, that they want to do. And again, if it's something you want to explore, then there's a lot of paths and a lot of opportunities. But I'll just, I'll kind of roll through this a little bit, but
one more.
Yeah. But one of the biggest things for me, you know, coming back is why I say, hey, this levy matters is, is so that we're able to go out and do some of these things. It's, I took math, say geometry when I was in high school. It was like a foreign language to me. So I sat in the classroom for fifty minutes a day, five days a week for a hundred and eighty days, and, and it was a foreign language. Well, when it finally started making sense to me was when I went out and started building houses and started pounding nails. It's like, oh, I understand that. That's where I look around. This is how you, you apply that. And that's really what we're trying to get, you know, for our kids in, in all areas. And then it's not just getting that vocational credit, but how do we give them a math credit for that? So if they're going out and they're doing our, our house construction class, they're getting industrial arts or the vocational credit. But how do we give them a construction math credit? And so that's showing it through the competencies. So just instead of sitting in that class, it's how do you show this? And, you know, developing that curriculum as we move forward with it so that, so that students are a little bit more engaged.
Oh, we gotta, we gotta take a brief break here.
I'm, I'm done.
No, you're, you're good.
I know, because I just, I dominate.
This was, and actually, this might be a great time for Brian to talk, but this is, this was something we did this year. We applied for a grant. We received money to be able to do this. And Superintendent Jensen went to the fair and he was able to buy some of our FFA animals. And then we were able to have those processed at Lower Valley Meats. And then those are then now served and used in our culinary classes for kids to be able to learn culinary. And so both at the middle school and the high school level. And so we actually, as, and we would invite everybody. We have community in days where we take people through the schools and it usually culminates with a provided with the meat from this, this grant that we did. And it's pretty cool because you get to see what the kids put together. They learn not just culinary, but they learn all of like the table settings and the textiles and all of that. And we're able to recruit two chefs out of the industry that be teachers. And they actually teach them really good culinary. So with that, though, let's pivot and let's talk about the egg center and what goes on out there. Because Mr. Bay, he knows it all and he wants to share with you guys a little bit of the course offerings out there. So I, I'm sure you guys are familiar with, with it. But it's, it's such a wonderful asset to our community and to this valley. And so for, for, for people to see firsthand what we're doing out there and to hear from Mr. Bay what we're doing out there, I think it's really cool.
Thanks, Jen. Um, this is, this is really neat for me. This is twenty-three years I've gotten to speak to West Valley School and talk to your eighth graders about the egg center. Um, and most of the time it's that we got a deal for you, right? And the positive and the exciting of what your eighth graders are going to experience. Today's a little different. What the levy and, and what's going to happen, there's a lot of unknowns. But for the, for the ag center, and this is going to bleed into our other vocational and career and coaching classes. Next year, if the levy doesn't pass, already this, for this next year, we are going to make some cuts. And it's going to affect our eighth graders. One is we're cutting an egg one class. We offer six, and we've historically offered six egg one for freshmen. And we're going to five, and next year that'll be Glacier class. So we're cutting an egg one class, we're cutting an egg three class. Natural Resources of Montana, which is this awesome class we, we run depending on if we have enough teachers and it works, but that's off to the wayside. Then we have two welding tube classes. And we have, we're so fortunate at the egg center is we teach a welding one where they can get a certification with running, start with FBCC. Then we have this welding tube class that they can build their project. So this is the trailers and the sled decks and the theaters and the barbecue and all that. They can build that, that project. And then we have for seniors, we have welding three class. So we have two welding two classes that are going to the side. We're not going to offer those next year and a welding three class as well. So this is, this is like immediate, like this is what we know is going to happen. From that, we're also going to be reducing FFA opportunities, you know, the SAE, that's our business side of things that the kids do. The bear animals that you see there, there'll be those students that aren't going to be able to, to do those things. We have an estimated number, it's, it's over eighty students next year. And this is what, this is what is really neat is I started in two thousand, two thousand and two was my first year at the egg center. And I think we were at like a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety students. And this last year we're at over four hundred. We have a staff of fourteen at the, at the egg center. So next year with levy, if it doesn't pass, then we're going to go from six egg teachers to four egg teachers. We are still going to be able to bring a current technical teacher from Glacier so we can offer a welding one class. But the egg teacher piece of that with FFA and summer activities and all the community services that, that will be offered. The next year, and that's where things get really ugly. We don't know, it's just that we haven't, we're just taking a stab on what's going to happen if levy doesn't pass is then we'll do serious consolidating, cutting more staff, really reducing what we have to offer our students at the egg center. Levy passes and then we're full speed ahead. We're going to look to hire the two egg teachers. So we'll be up to six and we'll have a full course offering that we've always offered. And offers many egg one classes in and welding two will be back in. So, so, yeah, so this is real, this is serious, but it's going to have some, some consequences to, to our high schools and all of our fifteen different eighth grade districts. So.
Yeah, so I mean, with, with that, I mean, let's go ahead and fast forward here a few slides. Just go ahead and flip a more, you know, we talked about the egg center. We also have work-based learning internships. We've partnered with two hundred and fifty businesses in the community. My law firm's actually one of them. I'm a lawyer, that's my real job. I volunteer as a trustee, as you all do as well. And I've had an intern at my law firm, this is Ortho Rehab, they had an intern interested in doing sports medicine type stuff. And she's still interested in, she's going to do it next year. And if you flip the next slide, this is a, a kid who wanted to do, a, a flathead who wanted to do CAD type work and got to work with Core Water Consulting and learned about CAD and, you know, boots on the ground work experience. And he's refined exactly what he wants to do. He doesn't quite want to do that, but he does want to get into the engineering field. So these work-based learning opportunities and experiences allow people to experience things before they have to go down the road of undertaking the cost of all the education. And it allows them to know, yeah, this is something I want to do, or this is something that maybe I don't want to do. Full disclosure of the six interns we've had at my office, four wanting to be lawyers, two wanting to be paralegals. I'm five for six so far. I have had one person who worked in the law office who said, yeah, I don't think I want to be a lawyer. And I'm like, that's fair, that's fair. So, so anyway, you know, maybe they, I bet they're the smartest one of the bunch, honestly. But anyway, let's flip onto the next slide. And then we also have, you know, straight up, you know, work-based learning in the schools and partnering with. So obviously we've got our culinary class, we've got our auto shop, we've got the welding. And then we've got our, our student-built homes. We have, this is a heavy machinery class that's offered and we partner with Schellinger Construction. And this is one of our students who recently graduated. He did this class, really great kid and did the class, learned how to operate heavy machinery and got a good connection with Schellinger. At the end of the day, he walked across the graduation stage, you know, Scott and I handed him his diploma and he walked right into a big rig, basically, and started working for Schellinger. So that was another one of the, you know, this valley's high schools. This is something that we, that's offered there. So go ahead and flip the next slide. Because this is, this is why, you know, this is why Scott and I are here. And obviously, you know, Brian being able to explain to what this means at the egg center as well is important because when we look at our enrollment numbers at the egg center, we have a pretty high proportion of kids from West Valley in our egg center. And so we really wanted to make sure Brian was out here. And so we really wanted to make sure Brian was out here to answer any questions you have about this, because I'm sure you're all hearing things. Um, but also to just give you the information so you know exactly what's happening there cuz you guys, um, the West Valley has a a great presence at the Ag Center. So um, let's flip to the next slide. So we have a levy on May sixth, um, we're trying to generate two point nine million dollars. Um, go ahead and flip to the next slide. Um, really what this is is, and what we've been talking about here are, is you probably all know. Levy-funded programs, uh, and you can go ahead and flip the next slide. We get obviously eighty percent of our funding from the state and the other twenty percent we need to get from local voters via levy. Um, our eighty from the state really kind of boils down to reading, writing and math. Um, the other twenty percent is all the things we've been talking about here. Those are levy programs, those are levy dollars. Our Ag Center Center is about ninety percent levy funded. Is that, that's my, when I drilled down with admin on that, that's about where we're.
That keeps coming up.
Yep, and so when we're talking about this stuff, um, you know, the, we have not passed the high school levy in eighteen years. Um, and so what you look at when you flip to the next slide, as a result, we're the lowest funded double A high schools in the state. Um, you know, it's, it's not really even close. I mean, I'd like to say it's it's just a Skoshoff. It's not, I mean, th- this is real, especially when you multiply it over the population of our students. And so um, we're really trying to put forth the effort here with this levy. And I think I I'll I'll say this, and I say this in every group we've had a chance to speak with. I don't think it's that our valley doesn't support our schools or our students. I really think it boils down to people don't understand how schools are funded and what is funded with levy dollars. And once people understand that, then they know why you have to, and once they understand the why, then we can start talking about the details of it. What's impacted, how much it's gonna cost, where does this money come from, et cetera. So um, we have high school seniors graduating without the benefit of a high school levy passed in their lifetime. Um, I think we get, the questions I hear are, wow, you, you know, our council public schools, our high schools, they're they're a beacon of excellence. And you've done it without a levy, why should we pass one now? Right? That's that's one thing I've heard out there. It's a good question. Um, what's happened is there's, I'd say there's probably three things going on. Um, one, we haven't passed a levy for seventeen years and as Scott has and I have seen as trustees. We have been riffing positions for the last, you know, every year we're riffing positions and it's passive riff. So we have people retire, resign, leave, um, we don't backfill, we don't. And so what that means is our class sizes are going up. Um, and we're basically bumping up against the accreditation metric for the amount of kids you can have in class. That's what's happening. Um, a second piece of that is we've had one-time funding, um, Esser funds. Um, a lot of school districts have those Esser funds available to them. We were basically able to stretch and cobble together those. Over the course of the period we had them to help meet budget shortfalls so that we didn't have to start carving into these programs that we've been talking about today. We've also worked into our, we had about one point five million savings that we've worked into to try and cover that while we try and pass a levy. Um, that's basically, that's where we are and that's what's happened. Meanwhile, our admin has done a great job of going out trying to get grants. Um, grants are one-time dollars, they don't cover a huge amount of money, um, they don't cover two point nine million dollars. Um, and they come with a lot of strings attached by way of recording and all that, which is why most school districts don't ever apply for grants. Um, we're one of the very few that actually does and it's frankly because we're so poor. Um, and I appreciate our admin taking that on and all the associated um, burdens that go on with applying for and reporting for grants. But that's how we've been kind of cobbling this together. We're now at the point where, let's go ahead and flip the next slide. Uh, this slide is, I, this is basically to say the percentage of tax dollars that you pay here in the Flathead that go to your schools. And the return you get on it of compared to the other double As, you get a heck of a return on it. I don't think our voters necessarily care about that. I think they feel the tax burden that they have and everybody's taxes have gone up. So let's flip the next slide. Um, and what we're talking about is average home in the Flathead Valley, four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. It's gonna be six dollars a month or seventy-three dollars a year to pass this high school levy. Um, what I will say, um, I've looked at my tax bill, um, it's painful, I'm sure you all have too. But when you actually drill down what's actually going to our local schools and specifically to our local high schools, the amount has gone down. And the reason is, is our levy, what last passed in two thousand and seven is a fixed amount. It doesn't go up based on inflation, based on people moving to the valley, based on new homes being built, anything like that. It is a fixed voter-approved amount and we can only impose enough mills to collect that amount. So we've actually imposed less mills the last years to collect that amount because there's more homes in the valley to help share that tax burden. So I'm probably explaining something you all know, but basically if we have a budget of a hundred bucks, or if our voter-approved levy is a hundred bucks. It's gonna stay at a hundred bucks, it's not gonna go up with inflation, it's gonna stay right at a hundred bucks. Say we've got ten homes to pay for that, they're all paying ten bucks each. Say, you know, three years down the road, we have twenty homes. Well, instead of everybody paying ten bucks each, they only pay five bucks each. So that's what you can see on your taxes, if you actually drill down and look back, the amount that's been going for our local high school has been going down. Um, so anyway, next slide and Scott, Scott's gonna, he's he's got the best part. I I'll I'll be, I'll be quick. Uh, the other thing we hear is, um, if you go back, the other thing we hear is admin, uh, we're heavy on admin. Um, if you go back.
Sorry. Which one do I wanna?
Uh, you just go back to, there was a bar graph after, the other thing we hear is we're heavy on admin. Um, you know, I I'm a big believer, the the truth shall set you free, right? And on these issues, as we hear them in the community, we go back and we drill down on our data and we go, what does our data say on that? Well, when we drill down on our data, what it shows is as far as the percentage of the budget. Where our budget, where we're investing our money is in high school instruction. So this is elementary. So you guys, um, that might be interesting. Uh, we are fully funded on the elementary side, um, so that is reflective of that. When you look at the high school, these middle two boxes, our high school instruction, we put fifty-two percent of our budget into high school teachers, basically. Um, all the other double As put in forty-seven percent. So we invest in our teachers as far as a percentage of a buzzet budget. Fast forward to our building admin, they have six point three three percent in building admin on the high school side. We're down to five point seven one. So we are not admin-heavy in our high schools. Fast forward to the central office, same deal, superintendent's HR and business, this is our admin. Three point six four for the other double As, three percent for us. Um, same for operations and maintenance, this is where it really takes a hit. They're at eight point nine four percent for the other double As, we're at seven percent. Um, you probably have seen things at our high schools that could use a little care and attention and um, it's true. So we have maintenance needs as well, but this is, this is an operational levy, this is for learning. Um, go ahead and flip to the next slide. Uh, just flip to the next slide, sorry, that one is, that's a, um, so this is what we're doing, we're out here in our final push. Um, and go ahead and flip our next slide, we've been to, um, we've been to lots of organizations, done lots of presentations. We're going to meeting with every school board, uh, every partner school board. And we're trying to make sure we connect with everybody so that everybody has access to information, can ask questions that they want. Um, ask for information they need. If we know, we'll tell you. If we don't, we'll go find out and get back to you. Um, and then the other ask we have, and that's for Scott, I I've taken so much time, but uh, I mean, go ahead, Scott. Scott's our board chair, by the way, he's.
You know, we appreciate you guys giving us time to come and speak to you. Um, we know that you guys probably already have a a lot of this information and understand this better than um, the general public. That that we're really trying to hit. Uh, one of the the asks we're gonna have of you guys is superintendent Jensen is is putting together a letter.
Well, thank you, Scott, I got the easiest part of the presentation.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Um, and and one of the things that I really want to uh, impress on you guys is is us in in Council School District Five. Is we really wanna make sure that we're partnering with our partner district. And if there's uh, anything that happens that uh, we can do a better job for you guys to support your students. Because we know they're going to Council. Um, we wanna be able to support you guys as well. So if there's something that we can do, we really wanna be able to do that. Because um, the stronger your district is, makes our district stronger too, so.
And uh, and I guess with that, we have, we brought fast facts of the levy that kind of have information to the extent you guys get asked questions or whatever. You can share those with folks, but at at this moment, I would like to open it up if, and I don't know, I know this is informational. But to the extent you guys have any questions or issues you're hearing in the community or, you know, conversations with neighbors and they're saying something to you that they're getting hung up on. Um, run it by us, we we probably, we've heard, I think I've heard everything, but there might be some new ones on there.
This is where we created out of all these presentations and we've taken, you know, people have asked and and provided information. And so then we put this in our frequently asked questions on the on on our website and that's how we came up. Do you want, can we pass some of these around? Send them down that way.
I think the one thing that I've heard is just on the whole, like the egg piece, that it's going away. Like no matter what, if the levy pa- like passes, they're still cutting. That's the confusion that I have.
And and I think I, from a trustee standpoint, I wanna let Brian answer this, but from the trustee standpoint. What we are looking at is we're saying, we know there's a lot of things that are levy funded and I can't, Scott and I can't look at one kid. Who's in the Ag Center and one kid at Linderman and say, you know, we're gonna cut you whole scale, but we're gonna go ahead and keep your program alive. Same goes for sports. I can't, we can't look at a football kid and a cross-country kid and say, your your sport gets to stay, but yours doesn't. So what's happening is literally, everything is going to be impacted. So every levy levy program is going to be impacted. Nothing is going to be full sail cut, everything is gonna be in, and those are the changes that Mr. Bay was explaining. As far as there's six teachers out there, two, two are gonna be cut. And I like, why is that Flathead and Glacier, I think we're looking at eight each in there and then Linderman is like the delta, so.
So like for next year, like tho- those classes we're looking at, um, egg one, egg two. Well, so so we, we try to be strategic about that, we've looked at different models, right? And in one of them, we offer a veterinary science class, right? If we have a standalone building, we have standalone program, I mean, it's it's the going thing. And so we were, we offer welding, we have welding classes. So we're gonna cut a couple welding classes so we can keep that veterinary science cuz we have twenty-five kids coming out next year. So so we've tried to be as strategic as we can with what we think is coming down the line. The the big question is gonna be in two years, what does that look like? And and the Ag Center will still be there. But we're gonna make so many changes and consolidating, so we're we're possibly looking at moving. You know, is Woods gonna be offered at Glacier and Flathead, or is it gonna move out here? You you know, so there's gonna be a lot of that consolidating and then just, just the amount of as far as the Ag Center goes. Like how much we produce, um, we're we're the, we we produce a lot of commodities. Like right now, um, this is kind of a cool thing. Uh, the Ag Center produces off of our different entities, business entities. About seventy-five to ninety thousand dollars goes back to kids in our curriculum, right? So we've been offsetting, um, you know, school district five budget for a number of years, you know, well. That's gonna change, we don't have to teachers, you know, consolidating. Is that gonna answer?
Yeah, so you're still gonna consolidate even if the levy does pass.
No, if the levy passes.
That's the confusion of the.
We're full sail ahead.
Okay.
Like the Ag Center and and Auto and um, our our Woods classes, our STEM classes. Um, Project Lead the Way and we're, we're doubling down and we are, we are gonna continue to offer what we have. Try to bring in more, but we have plan, we have plans for offering more classes, you know. Um, the Ag Center, we built it on that bond, now I'm pulling your lead, off I go. Um, we built the Ag Center.
We give you a longer leash, Frank.
We built the Ag Center, um, on on our bond, we have four hundred, we had, we can take, we can have six hundred students there. Like we have a plan, you know, we just need, we need to be able to have the the money to make it happen. You know, and that's, that's kind of trash, but that's.
Pretty compelling that you have four hundred students there right now.
Yeah, and so.
Huge program.
And just for clarity's sake, we count every kid, so we might have, we have like three hundred and ninety kids. But then we have kids coming back cuz they're, they're in as a junior and senior ag class or a vet science class, but they're also taking welding class. So so we, we're pushing that four, or twenty-one, four, or ten, I remember. But any teachers in here or school district employees, we all know that the kid that walks in first period is not necessarily the same kid that walks in seventh period. Right? They're a little different depending on what's going on. Um, so yeah, so we we look at it four hundred kids. So we generated our SAEs, like this is the money in the kids' pocket, we just have them keep track, records and stuff. They generated three hundred thousand dollars last year, their money, you know, working wherever. Well, it's pretty neat to be able to track that, so don't disrupt anything.
It feels like people miss the point too of how much money is generated for a community by FFA. And by students who are, um, you know, engaged in those activities because they're buying animals in our community. They're buying feed in our community, they're buying all of their supplies, all of their kits, everything. And then not only that, but then they're also helping supply commodities for our area. And I think, I don't, I think that's part of this, the thing that people miss out on to a certain extent. And like not understanding just how full circle the Ag program is. Um, you know, even the idea of just like egg one being cut, I'm like, oh gosh, cuz.
And it's a class, don't, don't say.
Right, yeah, sorry, I was like.
Just, these are the things.
Decreasing capacity for your Ag One students because you think about that, you know, eighth grade to high school transition. What happens there? You've got all these little fence riders, you know, and obviously that's not a hundred percent of your kids. But you've got all these little fence riders chugging along and if you're not plugging them into things that spark their curiosity. Things that clinch them, not only are you losing them potentially just to being a dropout, but also like decreasing student engagement. We don't have that engagement going on, what happens then to our taxpayer base in the future? Because a student that's not well-educated, that drops out or whatever, is decreasing their contribution to the tax base in the future. I mean, that's where I'm just like, listening to what you guys are saying going like, holy cow, the economic fallout of not passing this levy. Is so significant and well beyond, I think, what a lot of people realize it is.
Yeah, I mean, Linderman is a a great example of that. And that's kind of our last stop for a lot of the kids in this valley. And it offers them a path to get a diploma and it puts a really um, personally structured program around each one of them. And we have, we have a waitlist to get into Linderman and we can't accept all kids cuz, I mean, how many kids we have enrolled in Linderman? We, I mean, we're.
Five hundred and fifty.
Yeah, I mean, we graduate, um, we graduate, I, we said at the graduations, how many every year, it's like.
About thirty-five.
Thirty-five every year and these are kids, and when you hear their accomplishments, when they walk across the stage and what they've done. When given the opportunity to have that type of an education system around them, um, when you talk about cutting levy-funded programs and learning opportunities. That's one of them. And those kids not having that last shot. Um, man, you talk about the fallout, I had a conversation with Frank Gardner on that very issue. And um, it was, it was a, it's, it's a path that I sure hope we don't have to go down. Well, one of our West Valley teachers is a Linderman graduate.
Yeah, but as you guys know, CTE programs are probably the most expensive along with the Linderman Education Center. And you know, it's, but yet what the state gives us is that eighty percent basically for core curriculum. And hey, then you just need to offer a little bit, but as most of us know. So those are the really enriching classes, you know, that that provide for our students and our community, very important.
I just wanna add one thing with LEC, one thing that's changed over the course of almost twenty-five years, right? We used to be stay in our lane, right, silo, whatever the educational term is, right? You do this, you do this, you do this, and no, doesn't cross, right? Well, we have Ag kids that, we have LEC kids that attend Ag, we have Ag kids that are going to LEC. We have high school house kids that are at the Ag Center, we have music, we have, we have Ag kids that are heavily involved in the music programs. And orchestra, choir, band, they're getting scholarships, you know, and so, so what, I don't think the community sees is just this blending of classes. Cuz we're, we're doing the the PCBE, right? We've changed that. Well, some of us have been doing that for so long and now we're, we're, we're morphing that together, giving kids those opportunities. Even with how we, how we assign kids in class. We have kids that are, are Glacier, they go and take class at the Ag Center with Flathead kids. And we have Flathead kids that are taking class at the Ag Center with Glacier kids. And now, six years ago, that didn't happen, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty unique. Um, and it's pretty progressive with what we're trying to do to reach that kid.
And kind of just like it's every kid.
Yeah.
One in the spectrum to the other. I think you guys did a great job laying it out. It's, I mean, it's really compelling, obviously, we're probably an easy audience.
Hey, congratulations to you guys, literally every vote counts.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
But I think, I I do think the way you guys laid it out, especially. But I think I I do think the way you guys laid it out, especially with like breaking out the kind of core curriculum funding, it's the same thing we've been talking about. You know, I mean, hopefully this kind of resonates through the valley and helps out all the schools. And I think you guys did a really good job because it does explain. Much better how schools are funded and show that that we're not running at exorbitant costs. You're running at bare minimums. And you just wanna get up to adequate.
Yeah, well, and I I think the education piece of educating this valley of how we are funded all school districts, this isn't unique to. Council public schools, right? Um, I think I do hope it will have a buoying effect for for everybody next time they have to run down this gauntlet cuz. It is, it is a gauntlet and it's it's hard, but having the one-on-one conversations with people is absolutely the way to go. Um. So as you guys hear stuff in the community or questions arise or you need data or information, reach out, we'll drill down, we'll get it. Like I say, the truth shall set you free. Every. Every question that's come up, there's something you can drill down on and you can find something to help somebody better understand.
You know, we have a huge number of homeschool kids in the community. Have you been, have you been able to reach those parents at all?
Actually, I wonder about them. Actually, super superintendent Jensen and I had a lengthy conversation at the. First Nazarene Church last Thursday when we presented to their congregation and their, they had a community meeting for us and there were uh some homeschool parents there. We got to talk to them and I think being able to explain to them kind of what we've been talking about, this integrated learning system and especially now that we have the two. Um, public charter schools and our high schools. So that kids can come in and they can take a condensed block of science and get it out the door basically in two to three weeks. Um, you know, a super condensed block, looking after the Western Montana scheduling system. That's kind of how we modeled after. There is a lot of interest in stuff like that as well as being the interest in being able to go to the egg center, um, because they can go on the egg center. Part-time as well. And so I think the education piece of what is available and. Homeschool kids can stay homeschooled. They don't have to be, um, they don't have to be full-time public school students, but there's opportunities for them to be able to. Um, get certain courses and certain offerings and certain opportunities that are available to all kids in this valley, just like any other kids, so. I Pete, did I hit it?
You did.
Okay, alright. I figured you'd shut me down if I was going off script.
When do ballots go out?
Uh, they're being mailed this Friday, April eighteenth, so look for them in your mailbox on Monday, the twenty first. Election is Tuesday, May sixth, that actually coincides with uh Monday, May fifth is day ninety of our legislature, so. You know, we're we're working on that front too for for, uh, you know, elementary funding, but yeah, I think on May seventh, I'll just go to sleep.
Hopefully you don't have to read that.
We appreciate all your help and please reach out with any questions or concerns or if you have any teachers or parents that come to me with any questions or concerns. Just direct them our way. We're very happy to um have a conversation with them, so.
Thank you.
We we way blew our fifteen minutes.
It's like a high school assembly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty. Sorry, I should have gotten that out, but I did, I actually don't want you guys to remember your friends. She were headed out to Marion's, so.
Thank you guys, we're headed to Marion's, so otherwise.
Does anybody else? I got.
So where can people pick up signs for yards?
Signs for the yards at any of our high schools. We have the signs, so you know, kids are. But uh the school ones are still all. Um, but me, I think the park has um like a paper signs that people wanna print and put in business and whatever that's.
It's like World two point O.
I never grew up enough for that.
Okay, now we'll go on to that West Valley.
Shannon was here, but she had to leave at four thirty, so we should have slipped her in before they started.
And she had, I told her if she wasn't here, that I would tell everybody there. She's planning um. Teacher appreciation week, yeah, that's the sign of genius and stuff just went out for teacher appreciation week, so they have that going on. And they did have a meeting. It sounds like they do have people for president, vice president, treasurer and stuff. It sounds like it's all moving forward.
And Donuts for Grown Ups is this Friday.
And Richard assures me every little kid's gonna get a donut. We're not gonna have kids coming home crying cuz they didn't get a donut. That's, yeah, that's important to me, yes. So that'll, that'll, that'll be a good thing, so. And that that's supported by the PTO then.
I'm not sure Donuts or Grown Ups.
Alright, thank you. Go from there. Um, West Valley Teachers Organization for. Okay, the superintendent's report.
Just go over a couple things quickly here. Um, yeah. Anyway, we do have something on our agenda about the DEI that I wanted to talk about. It's a formality that we have to go go through. So we'll approve that. Um, it just basically assures that we're not doing any affirmative action policies or anything like that, which we have not done. In the past, but just in case that came up and if we're wondering like have have we been doing them and we have to stop them? No, we just have. Have to show the state, who then has to show the feds that districts in Montana are complying with that federal mandate. Um, and if we don't, then we lose all of our federal funding for that. So that's a pretty important piece on on the agenda there. Um, I wanted to give the board um a heads up that the Northwest Mass Group put together a letter that we sent to Suzy Headland about the. Mast assessment. Um, and I thought it was of a pretty, it was collective effort, I think eighteen superintendent signed it. Uh, out of like twenty-two or something like that. Um, anyway, but. What we highlighted in there was that the um students are experiencing, you know, a lot of fatigue and taking it. I think it's it's. Been, it was billed as something that would be, you know, like less time than us back and a lot of places are seeing that it's actually end up taking. More time, coordinate makeups and things like that. Uh, we also talked about the loss of instructional time that it's taken. Uh, and that we still don't really feel as districts that we get reliable results from that uh from that test. And essentially talked about how there needs to be, there needs to be a solution that kind of fits. Um, both what the state and feds require, but that we already do, you know, and so we're really pushing heavily for benchmark. Data being acceptable for like STARS or ISIP or Ames Web, whatever it is that your district uses. There's several that are nationally normed. Um, and who would basically be okay to test your kids reliably that way and it would be immediate results. We could track it. And then we aren't getting what one superintendent, funnily enough, called an autopsy report, where you get this testing information after the fact. It's months after they've taken it possibly, or what is it due to your instruction? And Mast was supposed to kind of fix that. Um, and it it's really hasn't built up to that, so. I think it's been especially, especially hard on single administrator districts in the valley. In fact, I think um. We've seen seven total superintendents resign this year, either through retirement or they're they're leaving education. Um, so that's, that's shocking. That's very.
Yeah, I think you think that this program had had something to do with that?
I think so. It's a part of a bigger puzzle that, you know, uh, is out there.
Just one more.
Just one more thing. Yeah, that's, that's in need of attention, at least in my opinion. Um, yeah, I was gonna talk about KPS and their levy efforts and we sent out a letter, obviously most of you probably got it. Um, that Matt Jensen wrote and put together to talk about, to talk about their levy. Um, right now, we've got a lot of staffing going on. Uh, just it's it's that time of year where we've got people jumping on Georgia for team and and people that. Uh, are moving on to bigger and better things or changing positions. So it's been kind of a little bit of chaos, it feels like, you know, the last couple of weeks with. Kind of not knowing where, you know, things are and counting up and looking at positions and analyzing how that affects the budget and and all the things with that. So. Um, just in general with that, we look at staffing, we also look at projections and enrollment and right now we're. Looking at possibly like eight hundred five, eight hundred ten students to start the year next year is our target. Uh, so. Thirty-nine total classrooms and I think we're pretty much at our limit. I think after that, there's very, very much. Many rooms to go and I think the um that Nicole and Alicia are gonna attest to that with putting the map together. It's a pretty impossible puzzle to piece together right now. So and then legislative updates, we continue to wait on STARS, I think, you know, they're uh. Probably it could be one of the last bills passed in the legislature, the STARS. Um, so. Right now, we're, you know, trying to work with the negotiation team on putting together some sort of language for an MOU. On what to do and there's conflicting information, there's different rumors about what needs to be done. It's changed, it actually literally changed minutes before this board meeting. Where we got another update from Lance Melton about um some changes to what they sent out. No joke during this meeting, I got another email from Bob Watson about that, that's, that's anyway, so when we'll. Figure out where we need to go, but it is a constantly changing, impossible to pin down. Um, piece of legislation right now, so hopefully.
Maggie's inbox is a nightmare right now, as evidenced by the screenshot that she sent me when I asked about the MOU.
So funny, is this on your radar?
Twenty-five MOU emails right below mine.
So anyway, I continue um to encourage people to reach out to um the SAM website if you. If you wanna log in, I can give you one, but it has a place to track every single bill that's going through, where it is. You know, all the information on it, um, who put it together, where where it was in committee, all that stuff. There's tons of websites out there that does the same thing. But um I think with the piece that was, that SAM provides is that it's like a very, it's local and it's it's very much tailored to schools. And how it affects schools. So um I think it's very beneficial.
Isabel Melton sent out a pretty good update on, I think, Saturday as well, the twelfth, um, kind of talking about like what happened last week and where things are at. So there are some things that, I mean, if board members are interested that. I feel like are would be priorities of ours, it might be good to send emails encouraging legislators to support. So that would be one to check out.
Yeah, yep, absolutely. Thanks, Lo. So that's all, so all I have.
Alright, thank you. Thank you once again. I appreciate you getting that Friday.
Yeah.
That Friday update.
Thank you.
That's great. Did they change the May fifteenth date then?
No, that it's locked in on May fifteenth, but there's, there's a lot of discussion about how, no, you don't have to do it by May fifteen. There's unions being told that you don't have to do it by May fifteen. Then there's documentation that you do have to do it by May fifteenth, so. Really, it's.
It's like if they pass it on May fourteenth, we have to have the MOU to them on May fifteenth. If they pass on May fifteenth, we have to have the MOU to them on the fifteenth.
And can we just prep it ahead of time?
Yeah, that's what we've been doing, but the problem is is then like somebody will change language with something and then we'll have to go back and redo it and then.
Well, and some unions are being told that they don't have to have an MOU, which is in direct conflict to what. Uh.
We're being told.
Legislation, legislator Jones is saying that you do have to have.
So it's kind of a mess right now with that.
And it makes three different.
Yeah.
Three different options prepared.
Right, exactly, so.
It feels like school choice almost with the amount of misinformation out there around it.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully, I think. I'm hopeful that we'll know more, you know, as the days go on, but every day it seems like it's changing and it's never ending, so.
And our clerk description is going to go for STARS compliance as well.
That that piece should be pretty good, so. Yeah, it's been frustrating process, but it'll be good in the end, right? It'll pay off, as we say for everything, right? The payoff is coming.
Thank you. Alright, we'll go on to action items now. Um, first one, finance is through those bills.
It was the normal West Valley month. There was no, nothing for the local, interlocal that would throw off what appears to be. An expenditure for us.
There's a Trifair LLC.
Computers, phone books. Kat's been working on trying to replace some of our prom books that are dying or dead, so. And we're trying to do it in a rolling manner. Cause we did purchase a whole bunch with with Esser during COVID and and they're only good for a certain amount, but we're trying to.
You guys feel like the, with the tech levy funds that we have, kind of sufficient revenues to just kind of. Replace and roll those through that fund? That's great. Yep, that was a tremendous help for that.
Yes, a big bullet dodged. Let's talk about like the ski trip or whatever. There's. Looks like there was a ski trip. Was that fourth grade or fifth grade or both?
These are student activities.
Okay.
Yeah, so the first two pages, I'm, so the first two pages are district and the second two pages are student activities.
Okay.
Sorry, I should have clarified that.
That makes sense.
That's why they look slightly different. But I've noticed that it doesn't actually say it up on top.
And everything's looking and feeling all hunky dory.
Yeah, in fact, what you just received is um where we're at as far as expenditures. What's been committed versus what's been budgeted. Or spent, committed, or spent.
Yes, so the question, this is. I can pop back to this another time, but insurance in terms of like what we need to do is afford.
Yeah, right now, it's basically just Maggie and I have to fit together and.
Okay.
Say go and it'll be okay.
Okay, it doesn't have to make any approvals or any.
And we would definitely let you know, though, you know. If we do, we'll, yeah, we'll have one of those. Yeah, yeah, that's a hard, hard date by then. After that, it's.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Yeah, there are any good discussions. I, uh, human resources that active during board, which. Dead force everyone.
So we have four new hires. Um, Marshall Stolffus, uh, elementary special ed, Caitlin Dories, eighth grade, ELA replacing. Um, Gina Wilson, but and also Marshall Stolffus is, it's, that's the hiring of the one we didn't fill last year, correct?
But I know also Marsha Stolffus is, it's, that's the hiring of the one we didn't fill last year, correct?
Um, either or.
Or either, yeah, or actually it was. Sorry, yeah. Um, and then um, Amy Thompson is a, is a new hired for first grade and Marsha Grant is fifth grade. And those are additional classrooms. And then it's the resignation of Molly's year. Um, Gina Wilson for retirement and Elizabeth Denman.
The fifth grade isn't, is replacing Nikki who is taking this special education job we didn't fill last year. That one is.
And then we have Mandy Ralston as a new pair of professionals starting.
So how many teaching positions do we have remaining open?
I have two.
Two, the both in the middle school.
And we added another group for first grade, is that correct? Is that what this additional hiring?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Because it's a big kindergarten class, correct?
Yeah.
And do you want to just talk to like where we are for our numbers too? Just because I know that was part of like our levy with these additional hires.
With these additional hires, we will be totally fine. Yeah.
But like, we're not, like, didn't you bring them to like the ratio?
Of the teacher.
I can send you something like that.
Oh, oh, are you talking about that? Oh, okay, yeah, I can.
Can you send that in your board?
I did, yeah, it's in the.
The board notes from Friday that he sent it out, he's had the.
Yeah, no, I saw it. Yeah, I just thought it would be good to share just because that was a big piece of our levy was making those smaller class sizes. So I thought it'd be good to share that.
Yeah, so if we add that section of. First grade will still be at roughly ninety percent of accreditation because it's such a huge class. Um, but what we were able to do is look at second grade as well. Um, and we have a teacher coming back from uh, leave. Who's gonna fill that role and that'll drop that down to eighty-one percent. Um, right now, they're running it over a hundred percent accreditation. Um, so, you know, when she said that they are getting close to those accreditation numbers, we fill that too here. Um, but we are looking really good um, in the other grades. Third grade will be about eighty, fourth grade will be about eighty, fifth grade about eighty. And that's where we'd like to keep it, right around in there. Sixth grade is, is a huge class, that's gonna be, um, that's that. Fifth grade this year, that's like at a hundred ten, a hundred, a hundred eleven kids. Um, assuming normal attrition rates on that, that'll be our highest at ninety-two percent. And then uh, seventh grade is seventy percent and eighth grade is seventy-five, so. Uh, besides that sixth grade class, the middle school is looking really, you know. It's really solid where we'd like it to be. And then um, then still those younger grades coming up, it'll be interesting to see. Um, if we continue to, to see those higher numbers. Um, but we kind of just project roughly at about eighty kindergartners coming in. Uh, we use that as the last ten year average and then uh, let me just take that number. But saw a bigger one this year at ninety and of course, then there's this, the. Eighty-one size that's in first right now, that's the anomaly, and then the rest are all about ninety to a hundred and then a hundred and ten, so. See.
So we'll be lowering those numbers.
Yep, yeah.
Sitting hopefully with nobody over accreditation barring unforeseen event.
Yeah, barring a hugely unforeseen event, because even in the, like, that ninety-two percent. You know, we'd have to get ten more sixth graders, you know, which is pretty, pretty rare to get that many in one grade level like that. Um, and then the rest were, were pretty, pretty good, like we need twenty-three more fifth graders and. So.
What is our deadline for out of district?
May thirty-first.
Okay.
The deadline for that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, we, we really like to keep those class sizes, you know, at a, a lower rate, that's, you know, when I first came out here, that was really, really. Something that the school is proud of. And so this would keep. Um, pretty much every grade level, right, about that low twenties. Um, and then K two, right about that fifteen, seventeen. Sixteen, which is where we love to see it. So right now, sixth grade again is, is about twenty-eight, which is still a lot of kids, so. Very, it's, yeah, that, passing that levy was huge and being able to give us some breathing to just spread out those, you know, um.
Now we just need classrooms.
Now, yeah, that's the next step, yeah, because they, they do feel like there's literally no more left. I think we're down after this, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think where there's maybe one more wall we can knock out, I think.
Somebody in an office, essentially.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you guys for looking at all that, though. I know that was a big piece, was trying to. Bring down some of those class sizes that were pushing thirty and over thirty, so.
That what we're looking for still in that, in the middle school then?
You said added a sixth grade for the class that's coming in, because they, we only have three sixth grades right now. So that's sixth grade job and uh, another fifth grade. Um, one of our fifth grade teachers resigned, so, yeah.
Hope I can motion through the April twenty-five West Valley Personnel Authority Report. Any more discussion? All's in favor. In unanimous. He, um, now going to see the approval of the Montana digital privacy agreements for bonsai and. Taping how? You wanna talk about that?
Yeah, we, uh, in the past, we, we uh, had to do these because we have kids here who are under thirteen. And if there's any kid who, who's under thirteen, then we have to have the um. DPA um, that, that also complies with Montana code annotated. And so what we have to do is run it through NTSBA to make sure that the, any type of platform's policy or privacy. Um, is acceptable, and so these are the ones that are deemed acceptable. And if they're not, then what we try to do is work with that company uh, or online provider to change their privacy agreement. For us, um, it's tough because so much of what we use is free. And so when, when it is free, um, even if we pay a little bit for it, they're like, we're not changing it, you know. Free, so then we end up having to find a substitute for that, that um, ends up complying with these DPAs, but. It's a, it's a basically a digital privacy protection for our kids, that none of their. Individual data is being used or taken, so.
And thanks Maggie for a little info. There's like the informational sheet now in the MDA, which she's just gonna keep on running.
Thank you.
It's gonna be so helpful.
Right, because before we were. We, yeah, we don't figure out what it was.
Yet your ability to create systems and processes is. I'll make a motion to approve the Montana digital privacy agreements for.
Oh, second. Is there any further discussion on that? In unanimous. Uh, the title six certificate, required signature by the US Department of Education. I think that's what you.
This is what I was talking about at the beginning, yeah, there, it's uh. We really have no choice but to do, so.
I will use eighty, we lose our.
Yeah.
I thought that was really interesting. You made a comment that it was, you know, Maine had decided they didn't want it, they weren't gonna. Sign this and they lost like.
Yeah, it's, it's a big deal. Suzy Hedlund came to our um, meeting last week in person and. Talked about this a little bit, just said, hey, this is coming, this isn't anything that, you know, we. It's just something that you have to do, and she said, if you don't, then you lose all your funding. Example, Maine decided not to do it. Um, and I think they're, they're higher. Um, like, like that office decided not to and they ended up losing a lot of money, so. Yeah, someone was like, can we just share that with the rest of the states? Spread that out to Montana. But for us, it's just signing the, the certification. We don't have to change anything in any document. We don't, we're, we're okay. We don't have to change any policy or anything like that. This is just, yeah, we're. We're compliant, we just have to um, send in the right paperwork to do so.
I'll make a motion to sign it, or?
Yeah, I make a motion to sign the Title VI certification for the required signature by the US Department of Education. A second.
Is there any discussion on that? Any further discussion? Hey, all was in favor of okaying the Title VI certificate. Signature, um, signified by saying aye. Like that fashion unanimously. Alright, we can motion to adjourn.
Uh, is there an Azu?
Thanks, guys. Thank you.